67 New Boston Road. After that, we'll hear from Phil Morrow from Pine Lake RV Resort. An update on the project and a discussion of some minor modifications to the stormwater and retaining wall. Following that, we'll hear from the town planer for the update. So has everyone had an opportunity to review the minutes of January 22nd?
Yeah.
Any comments, discussions? If not, we'll take a motion to accept if submitted with the correction that they'll say the 22nd.
Sub moved.
Okay, second? All in favor? Very good. Jean, you want to go over the A and R?
Yes. So you have an A and R before you for divert-y builders for land on New Boston Road. And you'll see that the plan shows lot 3R-1 where there's a house. And the purpose of this plan is to carve parcel A off of the larger remaining land and attach that with lot 3R-1. And it is noted that it is not a building lot and that it's going to be conveyed and annexed with lot 3R-1. So since the plan meets the requirements, I would recommend you endorse the plan.
Okay.
Sub moved.
Any other? Second?
Second.
Any other discussion or questions?
On the permit that was requested, it is marked not a building lot?
It is.
Okay. I had a question when I was back here, but that's okay.
Bring it on, fair. Opposed, no one?
So if you could do the honors?
Sorry, here you go. Okay, very good. Mr. Morrow would like to come up and discuss on the status of the project.
Yes, indeed. Good evening. My name is Philip Morrow and I'm the owner of Pine Lake RV Resort, formerly known as Yogi Bear Campground. And I'm here tonight to originally propose the construction of two retaining walls to enhance stormwater and erosion control. I'm pleased to announce that the need for those walls has been obviated and I actually will not be constructing those walls. So we'll stick with the original plan that did not call for those walls.
Okay.
And I had advised Jean of this a couple of days ago and she said, you know, we got you on the agenda, so it might be a good idea to get caught up, which I thought was a great idea. Always a pleasure to get to know our neighbors and fill you in on how we're doing. Before I start, I'll throw it open to any questions that anyone may have. I have a couple of items that I want to tick off and share the progress with you. But before I can get my thoughts across, perhaps I'll entertain any preliminary questions you may have.
Great. Any questions from anyone?
I just want to say I'm impressed going, you know, we've had this for a couple of weeks now and looking through it. I'm impressed with how much you've gotten done so far.
What we're hearing from...
Well, it looks to be the quality, not to interrupt, the quality of the work that's being done from this vantage point.
Thank you. I think the place is looking great, which is a little bit of a stretch because it's in the middle of winter. But the buildings are really coming along. And I'm hearing from people that deliver our supplies, like the people from Howl Lumber that deliver our lumber or the Harvey Building Materials that deliver our siding. And they're all going, wow, I've never seen buildings go in this quickly and this efficiently. You guys must really know what you're doing, which is maybe a misstatement, but we're making good progress.
Great.
So I'll go ahead and give you a quick overview of how we are doing. The plan originally called for 10 buildings, four of which were conference gathering areas, assembly buildings, if you will. And I'm pleased to note that all four of those buildings are up. The slabs are poured, the vinyl is in place, the shingles are in place, the plumbing, underground plumbing is in place. And we're now, the interior walls are all formed up. And we're running, we have the electric run in three of the four. And we're coming back with additional top-off plumbing, audiovisual, work, database workstations, insulation, and soon we'll be putting up plaster and paint.
Uh huh.
And I would anticipate that that progress, and we're also proud owners of 10, 400,000 BTU propane heaters.
You haven't needed them everywhere.
Which, which...
In New England.
And sometimes I feel like I'm at an airport getting ready to take off when these things fire up. But they pump out the heat and they enable us to pour our slabs and to conduct this work in a very civilized manner. So this, this building up here, this far up in New England is a different, horse of a different color for yours truly, but we're adapting and those heaters were the best investment I've made in a long time because they enable us to make this progress.
Keep working.
So we have all four of our conference centers built and all six of our bathhouses are built. And they're all closed up with the exception of three of our bathhouses. And they'll be closed up, meaning all the doors and windows in place and sealed so that we're not heating the outside, which just gets expensive. So I think with 10 buildings up and running, I think that by the middle to end of April, the interior of those buildings should be 90% if not 100% complete. That leads us to the infrastructure. The infrastructure, of course, being water, sewer, electric, construction of roads and sites. And with that, we've, we've made tremendous progress also. But most of that progress was contingent on one very important matter, and that was getting our wastewater treatment facility through the DEP. And that's a two-step process. First, you have to kind of get permission with a notice of intent to build the facility. They look at it and they give you approval for your notice of intent to build. And then they will review the site plan of that building and of the entire discharge process very closely. So we have gotten on December the 14th, our discharge, our permission to build the plant from the DEP, and that was a major milestone. Because they were, they were willing to let me build water and sewer in one small, specific area, but to go no further until we had that permission. And we decided not to even build in that area because we ran into a lot of ledge and a lot of huge rocks, the likes of which I've never seen, never seen a 60,000 pound rock. But we did get that approval from the DEP on December the 14th. And just today, we finalized our site plan for all of our water and sewer and wastewater treatment facility. And that plan will be submitted to the DEP by the close of business tomorrow for final approval. And that's very exciting because that will allow us to build our entire collection system and our water. So that's very, very encouraging. Old Man Frost has a hold of our dirt and we're certainly not going to try to put our underground in, in these frost conditions. I've learned the hard way that that's spinning your wheels. You get to pay twice as much to get half as much accomplished and it's just a losing proposition. So we will wait for the warm weather to begin in earnest our underwater, our underground facilities, our water, sewer, electric, our Wi-Fi and our cable TV systems, once the frost lets go of the Mother Earth. So we had originally planned along two small areas, along Lakeshore Drive, along the lake, for those of you that may remember that, we had, as you're driving out on that road adjacent to the lake, there were a lot of cottages that were kind of up off the road a little bit and covered with timbers. We now have all the cottages gone from the property. And when we were removing those timbers, those cottages in that area, the timbers really didn't do, didn't do too well. We were going to get rid of them anyway, but to get the cottages out, we had to destroy the timbers. And we had to embark on our, what we called embankment restoration. So we've now, along Lakeshore Drive on the west side, on the side away from the lake, that area which used to be those nasty little cubby holes and scrawny trees where you could see the roots and there was those little caves underneath the grade, if you recall that, very unsightly, not exactly what I would call virgin land. We now have smoothed that, we've restored all of those banks. We've covered that entire 700-foot area with six inches of shredded mulch. We have stopped all, any and all erosion that has existed for years and years and years. And frankly, that whole embankment along that roadway, and it also resulted in getting the road and the sites on the same grade so that we can expand our roads, so that we can get a good solid 20 feet of roadway, which will make the fire marshal extremely happy and make our RVers happy. So we, we made a major step forward in getting those cottages out and seeing the place kind of for the first time. Because they were really blocking the view of how badly eroded that hillside was. And we were able to restore that hillside and then cover it with mulch six inches deep and it looks fantastic. We had a similar wall proposed for the area where all the cottages were in what we call our Yogi Square. And there, there was one, the far end of it, the westernmost end of Yogi Square, that's four sites along a bank that were, again, dug into those nasty little cubby holes with trees overhanging that looked like they were ready to...
Swallow.
If they, if they had been there today, over the winds of last night and today, I hate to think what could have happened. But we were able to go in and again, restore those banks back to where they were, God knows how many years ago, with a nice gentle slope and have covered about 400 feet of that embankment with six inches of shredded mulch. And that just locks in and has really helped stop the erosion that was happening there for many, many years. And let's not be confused, that erosion was flowing down both along Lakeshore Drive along the lake and even as far as Yogi Bear, it would flow all the way down into the lake pretty much unobstructed, siltifying the lake, which is not a good thing. It was basically choking our lake over time. So we feel very, 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 very lucky to have had the weather in which we could do those kinds of improvements. We've also harvested about 30,000 cubic yards of loam, which a lot of people, a lot of the guys that are working with us there call it loom. And I could say, what is loom? And I don't know, I call it loam, but maybe it's the pronunciation, so excuse my ignorance. But we have about 30,000 yards of really high-quality topsoil and really rich materials. And that is a valuable asset when we get ready to really rest this place up and landscape it to within an inch of its life. We will have, for example, along Lakeshore Drive where we have kind of leveled it out and cleaned it up, we'll be able to have berms in between each site that will be maybe two to three feet high and maybe 15 to 30 to 40 feet long, or 30 feet long, on which we will plant trees and shrubs and flowering bushes and berry bushes to really create a sense of privacy. And where we were going to plant that wall, both on Lakeshore Drive and on Yogi Square, we can now not have a wall and we built a retaining wall up front, which looks great, but it still looks like a, a wall.
Right.
It's not natural.
Right.
And so we'll be able to come back in with trees and shrubs where the wall would have been to further enhance the atmosphere and the look of those sites. They're going to be just absolutely stunning. So this project is going in the exact reverse order of the 30 other projects that I've done. Where normally I get the infrastructure in with water, sewer and electric, get my roads and sites situated, and then get around to building these buildings. Well, this one is completely backwards. And we're building the buildings first because of old man winter. And then when the spring comes, we're going to hit the ground running. We have the firm named Chesla, which I think is really strong, they're very impressive guys. And we have them fired up, ready to go once the weather is correct to help us with our water and sewer installation. And that will be a blessing. I really have a lot of confidence that they can do a world-class job with a world-class plan that will have been approved by the DEP. And the DEP, by the way, is giving our plan strict scrutiny, really giving it a hard look. I have designed probably 25 RV parks, the water and sewer systems. Not me personally, but I had input with our engineers who then would design pursuant to my experience that I've had. And we did that here, and I'll just share a little vignette with you. We started in one section that had about 38 sites and we had five manholes. And after the DEP got through correcting our plan, we now have 12 manholes. So they're giving our plan strict scrutiny, which is always a good thing. And we are more than, more than gracious to take their input and incorporate it into our plans. And I would hope that that would give everyone that much more comfort that we're building this park and we're building it by the book and it's going to be a really stellar park when we're through. I'll, I'll close by noting, I've gotten to know, living here now, basically, has done a couple of things. Going through these winters has, I think, tested my metal a little bit. And honestly, it's made me a better person, you know, to be able to handle it and to get through it. And I'm not going to say that I'm enjoying it, but I'm going to say it's a great, you know, it's a great kind of experience to go through some of these winters, or this winter particularly. So for me personally, it's been very exciting. But more exciting is getting to know the people. We have a lot of looky-loos. And I mean, on the weekends, we have the gate in place, but sometimes we say, come to the office for information. And they come in and they see our resort center per the picture. They see our Minuteman Conference Center and our White Conference Center. And Jean Boubaud was with me today and she saw that beach conference center that we have. And how did it look, Jean?
Looked really nice. Everything's really shaping up there. And this area that we're talking about in particular this evening looks really good without the retaining wall. I think it just looks much more natural. He has some work to do with the Conservation Commission, but from our standpoint, I think it's, looks fantastic there. So, and even the little cottages, oh, sorry.
No, no.
Took a tour inside of the little cottages that are...
Park model RVs.
Park model RVs, but they're beautiful, really. Very nice, very spacious, so I think it's going to be great.
We have four sample park model RVs or cottages. And they're handcrafted Amish cottages, all pine, tongue-in-groove on the interior. And I think you were kind of pleasantly surprised as to how really cool they are. And again, we'll have one-bedroom, two-bedroom and studio units available for daily, weekly and monthly rental.
Great.
And I will say that, speaking of that, our, our properties across the board, we have 10 other properties. Our revenue in 2018 increased about 11% on average. Our park, for example, it will most closely resemble, this park is our park in Virginia Beach, where in the first year we went from $500,000 gross to a million six in year two and then to 2.2 million in 2018. And that means a lot more lodging tax. That means a lot more tax revenue for Sturbridge. And in the words of one of the council members that I have met with previously, "This is exactly what we want. We want people to come to Sturbridge, have a good time, spend their money and then leave." And I, I hope you take that the right way.
Oh, yeah. We get it.
With love. But it's, it's a pretty good, it's a, it's a very good formula that we have and it's going over very, very well. We are chomping at the bit to get this open. I think the park is going to be even more of a significant hit than I realized, given the buzz that I'm hearing about the park. And I will just say this about that, working with the city has been fantastic. The building department has been right on, spot on the money. The permitting process for all 10 buildings has been smooth. We have our pool permit in place. We have our permit in place with the DEP. And that's, these are not insignificant statements. So thank you to the planning department and the building department for not slowing us up and keeping us moving. And it's been a real pleasure, kind of, turn people's heads as to how smoothly and how quickly this park is coming along. We hope to maintain that momentum and we hope, worst-case scenario, to be open by the 4th of July.
Wow, that's great.
So that's our goal and, damn it, if you don't have a goal, you can't change it.
Right.
That's great.
If we have a goal and everybody's focused on it, and I will promise you, every contractor that comes onto that property and our little staff that fluctuates right now, it's way down to four people, but it got as high as 12 people during the build-out and the heat weather, our staff, they all know one day, 4th of July.
That's great. Very good.
So thank you for all the cooperation that I've gotten. Jean Boubaud has been fantastic. The building supervisor, Nellie, has been great. Cindy's been great. And I've gotten to know them all pretty well and it's been a great experience.
Great.
So thank you to Sturbridge. And I hope that my investment here, which I will say, one last thing, the cost of doing business here, it is, it is almost breathtaking. I mean, there's been a few curveballs thrown at me that I just didn't exactly have in the budget, but we're fine and we'll get this thing built and we'll get it built in a timely manner. And boy, the cost of doing business here is a lot...
Amazing, yeah.
It's, it's, it's high.
Yep.
It's really high. But the quality is also very high.
Great. Well, thank you very much and thanks very much for the update. That's very, very encouraging and we're really happy it's going so well.
And again, any thoughts or questions?
I just have one question. How many RV spots will you have now?
We're going to stick right with, we're, we're holding steady at right around 341.
Okay.
We're seeing a few areas where we'll probably, I'm, I'm okay to let another five not be put into service because they're just not quite right. But I would say somewhere between 335 and 345 is a very solid number.
Okay.
And I think our original plan kind of finally settled in at around 341. And I don't see any deviation at all. It's not like I'm trying to build this thing and, oh, I can sneak in 10 more sites here and 11 more sites here. Trust me, 341, the numbers work. At 335, the numbers work. And the number, you know, this park can be very successful.
Great.
Great question.
Great news.
Very good.
Okay.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jean.
You're welcome.
For getting me on the agenda.
You're welcome.
And come on down, take a look.
Great, you will.
Thank you.
Okay.
Is that your update?
Yes. Our complete streets prioritization plan was disapproved. It was kind of interesting, the comments that we received back, they talked about it being an auto-dominated plan. And so I just thought the Mass DOT review notes weren't really geared toward our plan. And lo and behold, the Millbury comments were the same exact comments that we had. So we checked that today.
Wow.
So we went, we had a meeting today, myself, Mr. Kozak, CMR PC, and Butch Jackson and Mark Agello. And we went through the plan. There are maybe four revisions in language that we made. And we have a call into Mass DOT to get some guidance and we're going to resubmit because the comments didn't really match the plan, so.
Interesting.
Sure. And a lot of it was 18 through 29, we didn't review due to lack of time. So I'm not really sure, but I guess we'll send it back in. They say it's not unusual for your first plan to get disapproved, which is fine as long as the comments match.
Yeah.
That sounds kind of bad that the comments didn't match.
Yes. So we'll, so we'll try it again. And our next meetings are March 12th and March 26th. And so far, it's still holding very eerily slow on permitting, which is very unusual, but kind of a welcome break for us to work on other things. I have started working on the Route 50... I have started working on the Route fifteen zoning. And spoke to Mr. Blanchard yesterday about the possibility of having a charrette. Because I don't necessarily think we should do this in a vacuum. I think we should get input from people who live and work in that corridor. So I think our intent would be to have a draft that we can present to you and to the Board of Selectmen, and then talk about having something, even if it's on a Saturday morning, where I set something up and come in and just try to get some input from some folks as to what they would like to see. They live there, and-
I think that would be very good.
That's a good idea.
Is the forty-B park moving forward with their plans?
So I emailed them and asked for an update a few weeks ago. And they told me they'd be back in touch very shortly. So I haven't heard any more from them. We need to keep a close eye on it because I'd hate to see the permits expire after all that work that was put in, all the money in engineering and permitting fees and all the work that the town and consultants and the Zoning Board of Appeals put into that project.
Was that in your letter, when that expires?
Was it in?
You contacted them, did you?
I, no, I just made note that we're fast approaching the three-year mark, so. So I need, if I don't hear anything, I'll follow up with them again soon. And then the Citizen Planner Training Collaborative, I know some of you have registered. I did notice Rebecca sent you the 2018 agenda. So if you selected classes from that list, they don't work. I found that out with a couple of Zoning Board of Appeals members this morning. When they came in with their sheet filled out for me to register, it was last year's. So, so if you are planning to go, your best bet is to look online. I sent you all a link today, so.
Great, very good. Speaking of charrettes, you know, that first charrette we had on Route fifteen was November ninety-seven, nineteen ninety-seven. We had a charrette on that, yeah. It came up because we have, in Palmer, you know, we're working on the idea of trying to support this rail stop, passenger rail stop in Palmer for the east-west rail study. And so we retained John Mullen from UMass to do a study on that. And he talked about doing a charrette, so I kind of looked it up because that's the last time I really worked with John, which is quite a while ago. Neither one of us has changed to look any older. So, any old business, Russ, or? Do you have anything else?
For the old pay-letty, has there been any discussion on that?
I had a adult-use marijuana facility contact me about that, but nothing firm. They just called to inquire about the zoning, if it was zoned appropriately. And I haven't heard any more.
Interesting.
And what about the building on twenty? The one that recently sold that's next to the newer building?
So that's Allsko Manufacturing. I have received nothing official. However, I was speaking to somebody who said that it is Dexter Russell Manufacturing out of Southbridge, and that they are going to package their knives there. So they bought the building and the equipment to do packaging. So I think that's great news.
Nice expansion to Sturbridge, that's terrific. Yeah, it's a great company.
It's right next to the one-ninety-eight Charlton Road, the new building. And there's the bank there, I think it's in between there.
Now, did Allsko relocate, or just what did they?
No, they closed.
They closed the business?
Yes.
Wow, interesting.
As far as I know, they just closed.
Yeah, wow. They were making all those little plastic things.
They were, the little flossers.
Two things, flosses and stuff, huh?
Yeah.
Oh, that's too bad. Oh, it's good that Dexter Russell is moving in. Heather, did you have anything, or no? Sue? Really, any, any new? That was old, any new? I think that's it, we can have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?